I'd like to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Beloit City Council. It is now 7:00 PM on Monday, March 3rd, 2014. Item number one is called to order, which we've done. Roll call.
Roll call shows all councilors present except for Councillor De Forest.
Item two is Pledge of Allegiance. Will you please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is Special Orders of the Day and Announcements. We have done this time, so we'll move on to item four, Public Hearings. Item 4A.
A proposed zoning text amendment to amend Section 5-408 of the Zoning Ordinance, Chapter 19 of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Beloit relating to designated floodplain maps for carry ingredients. The Plan Commission recommended approval, six to zero.
Mrs. Christensen.
Carry ingredients had applied for a letter of map revision after they had relocated Springbrook Creek prior to building their, the carry center out in the Gateway Business Park. The Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA, has recently issued that letter of map revision, which does include changes to the floodway and floodplain adjacent to the creek and has an effective date of April 1st, 2014. Our next step is to modify the ordinance to show that letter of map amendment, which is what is before you tonight, the effective area lies between the Interstate and Gateway Boulevard and, in accordance with FEMA and DNR directives, must be approved by the city. It is, Plan Commission did review this item and recommended approval unanimously. We would ask that you have the first and second reading tonight, since this is a pretty routine matter, so that action can be taken tonight.
Thank you very much. I'd like to open the public hearing on item 4A. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak on item 4A, please approach the podium and state your name and address. Second call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4A. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4A. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on item 4A. And do we have a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion suspended.
Second.
Moved by Loopkey, sent second by Levy. Any questions or comments on suspending the rules? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Suspended the rules by a vote of six to zero. Do we have a motion on the underlying matter?
Move.
Second.
Moved by Levy, second by Kincaid. Any, Councillor Van de Bogart?
Couple of questions from Ms. Christensen, and maybe, maybe we know the answers, maybe we don't. What impact does this change have, if any, on floodplain insurance and the potential for that? And then what if, if any, impact may this have on the proposed realignments of the 3990 interchange?
Well, it has no impact on the alignment, but insurance, I don't know what impact this has on insurance. If you're in the floodplain, you need flood insurance. This actually takes a piece of land out of the floodplain. When they moved the creek, they took some land that was around where Carry Center is built and took it out of the floodplain. So there's less need for insurance for carry ingredients, at least. I don't think at any point it increased the amount of floodplain or floodway.
Okay, so it was a neutral that way?
Yeah, it essentially allowed carry ingredients to develop where they did develop, because the creek was too far north, so they realigned it so that it was a little further south. And then, as a result, it opened up more developable land.
Okay, I remember that part, yeah. All right, thank you.
That's all. All right then. Any other questions or councillor comments? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes six to zero. Thank you very much. And item 4B.
A resolution authorizing a conditional use permit to allow ground-level office uses in the CBD 1 Central Business District Core for the property located at 430 East Grand Avenue, the Phoenix Building. The Plan Commission recommended approval, six to zero.
Mrs. Christensen.
The Phoenix Building is planned to be, to include multifamily residential on the upper floors and then retail and professional services on the ground floor. The zoning ordinance essentially says that ground floor uses can only be allowed as, ground floor office use can only be allowed as a conditional use in the CBD 1 district, which this building is part of. The total square footage of the ground floor is 12,000 square feet. They, the applicant has requested that approximately 3,806 square feet of the ground floor be used for office space. They have secured one tenant that will use 2,506 square feet, leaving 1,300 square feet for another tenant's office space. We did contact the Downtown Beloit Association to ask how they felt about this, and they were supportive of these office uses. At Plan Commission, there was a question asked of, you know, we always say yes, is there ever a point we would say no? And what would that be? And Shawna actually had already thought about it, and so she had said that they didn't, the DBA did not want any more than 40% of a block to be office. So they wanted at least 60% to be retail. So she had already thought this through as she was considering the Phoenix project. No exterior renovations have been proposed, except the ones that were already done. And Plan Commission did recommend approval, subject to the conditions listed in the resolution, which are that this conditional use permit authorizes up to 38, 3,806 square feet of office space on the ground level of the subject property, and then our standard condition about major changes coming back through this public process and minor changes being approved administratively. And Plan Commission did recommend approval.
Thank you. I'd like to open the public hearing on item 4B. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak on item 4B, please approach the podium and state your name and address. Second call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4B. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4B. Hearing none or seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on item 4B. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Mr. President.
Second.
Moved by Van de Bogart, second by Spritzer. Do you have any questions or comments on this? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes six to zero. Item five is citizens' participation. We've reached the point on the agenda for citizens to come forward and speak to the council on matters of interest that may come before us in the future. We may not act on any requests, but may refer the speaker to staff for assistance. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less and refrain from personal attacks of any kind. I have no sheets indicating that anyone wishes to come forward and speak under citizens' participation, but I'll call forward anyone who wishes to speak at this time. Second call for persons to come forward and speak under citizens' participation. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak under citizens' participation. Seeing none, I'll close citizens' participation, and we'll move on to item six, which is the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussions of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point of the agenda. Does a councillor wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? Hearing none, the consent agenda consists of items 6A through 6F. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Levy, second by Loopkey. All in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes six to zero. Item seven, licenses? 7A.
A resolution reaffirming the Class B beer and reserve Class B liquor license for Hourglass Media LLC, Doing Business as the Castle, at 501 Prospect, and establishing a timeline for completion. The ABLCC recommended approval, seven to zero. On July 15th, 2013, the City Council granted a Class B beer and reserve Class B license to Hourglass Media LLC, Doing Business as the Castle, at 501 Prospect, with John Wittenbelle as the agent. The license has not been issued to date due to building, building construction. The Section 31.04 Sub 3 of the City of Beloit Municipal Code states that the City Council may rescind a license previously granted if the licensee has not, or excuse me, if the license has not been issued because of incomplete construction, renovation, or code compliance for more than six months. The code does allow an opportunity for the licensee to be heard prior to any decision regarding the license. The ABLCC requested that the agent appear before the committee on February 11th to discuss the status of the 11th, or of the license. At that meeting, the agent presented the attached request for an extension and indicated that the lower and main levels of the building will be complete and ready for occupancy by April 1st. The ABLCC reviewed the request and unanimously recommended that the City Council allow, allow the agent until the end of the current licensing period, which is June 30th, 2014, to fulfill the inspection requirements and obtain the license. Because this is a reserve license, it is not part of the city's quota for regular Class B licenses, meaning there's nobody waiting for this license anywhere. We do have four additional reserve Class B licenses that are available right now. Staff does recommend that the council follow the recommendation of the ABLCC and adopt the attached resolution.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Loopkey, second by Spritzer. Do we have any other questions or comments? Councillor Spritzer.
I was just wondering, did, did this need to come to us in order for the, the extension to happen, or did it come because the ABLCC decided they wanted to, to talk with them? I was just wondering, it says that if they go more than six months, we can take it back. I was just wondering how come it ended up coming to actually reaffirm it?
Well, you do have the option of not, if you don't reaffirm the license, it acts as directing staff to start the process for revocation.
So this is just saying, we don't want to do that?
Right.
Thank you.
Councillor Levy.
Just a quick question, did we do the same thing for the thirsty badger up on Prairie Avenue at one time? Wasn't this kind of a similar type thing? So we're basically just kind of being consistent to answer Councillor Spritzer's, and question that we've done it before. So I think it's a good thing that it does come back, because then we can make sure we ask the questions that we need to, to make sure that they stay on track, because I think one thing that we decided at that time is, we did not want a license to be held up, even though we got, you know, extra ones. We want to make sure that people are continuing to move forward with the process.
Right.
Okay. All right, do we have any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes six to zero. Item eight is ordinances. We have none tonight. Nine, there will be no appointments. So we're on to number 10, councillor activities and upcoming events. I will start with Councillor Van de Bogart.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a number of them to talk about tonight, fortunately. First, I'd like to make a special thank you to the Department of Public Works employees who plow our streets. I had occasion to get up early on Sunday morning after the snow had passed through, and I was astounded to find that at a really early time on a Sunday morning, not only were the main arterial streets plowed, but many of the side streets were plowed as well. And it reflects a level of, of competency and hard work and dedication to, at the end of the season, still be performing their, their jobs as well as they do. I can't imagine the amount of time, I suppose we'll see the bills for the overtime at some point, but the amount of effort and, and time that these individuals have placed in keeping our streets open. And anecdotally, I hear from other communities that, that their streets are not nearly as well-done and taken care of as most of the ones in our community are. So I think they deserve a big, a big thank you. A number of other things that I've been up to, I have had the opportunity recently to participate in the Ellers Municipal Finance Seminar held at the Kalahari Resort in the Wisconsin Dells, on my ticket, by the way, not on the city's ticket. Couple days after that, along with City Manager Arft and Vice President Spritzer, I participated in the Municipal Lobby League, League of Municipalities Lobby Day at the, at the Capitol in Madison. Had occasion to meet with Representative Loudenbach, representative from Janice Ringhand's office, Senators Kedzie and Cullen, in reference to issues that were pertinent to the City of Beloit. We talked about the alignment of Highway 81 going to Hart Road and the potential for signals rather than roundabouts at a number of the other spots in the potential interchange. And we gave them the council's resolution showing a support for 2A or B as the options that we were looking at for that particular project. The day after that, I was able to volunteer for the Beloit International Film Festival, helping present one of the films. We all had a joint meeting last week with the school board. I'm going to be participating in the mushing for Meals on Wheels at the end of the month, and I would point out that March is a month where a number of locations around town participate and try and support the Meals on Wheels project. Later in the month, I'll be volunteering for the Welty Maple Sugar Event for some of the elementary school students, and then I did have the opportunity on the 23rd of February to again jump in the lake, Lake Story with the Special Olympics Polar Plunge for Special Olympics in Illinois. So not only was I all wet, but I was all cold. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Councillor Kincaid.
I have nothing to report. I, I can't top one single one of gyms today, so, but congratulations for a week or two weeks well done.
Councillor Loopkey.
I too want to thank all the folks who, over the past two weekends, have contributed to the success of BIF. This brings such positive acclaim to Beloit, and so many people from surrounding areas and, and some areas quite ways away to Beloit, and not just directors and producers, but just people who want, want to see good movies and have good fellowship and have good meals in Beloit. It's just a, a real positive. I also want to say the partnership with the Beloit Schools is, is strong and healthy, and it's nice to get together with them as we do the townships and, and build together. So just wanted to report on that, that's all.
Thank you. Mr. Vice President.
Well, I also, as Councillor Van de Bogart said, had the chance to go to Madison for the Legal Wisconsin Municipalities Lobby Day and talk to our representatives about issues affecting the city and municipalities generally. I also had a chance to attend a number of films at BIF, as well as being a judge at the BIF Plus Music at Maryland Houston's. And I was at the DBA Downtown Beloit Association Awards Party recently, and there were a number of great awards given out for so many things that happened in our downtown in the past year. It was great to be reminded of all of that success.
Thank you. Councillor Levy. Nothing. Right, and I have nothing myself tonight. So, next item up is 11A, the City Manager's Report. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's once again time for our annual report to the community, and as you know, each year we usually follow your State of the City official report with this PowerPoint that overviews a number of things that have happened in the community. And this year, we decided to do something a little bit different. We're taking a look back, kind of a more retrospective look at things that have occurred in the city over the last five years. And this project came out of an initiative we were involved with, with the Visitors Bureau, and we kind of expanded it. And it was interesting, as we looked at the city's strategic plan, which, as you know, we take very seriously, and we update it each year as the, really the first stage of our annual budget preparation process. And when you look at the vision statement, which we've tweaked a few times, but it's essentially been the same now for several years, and it talks about making Beloit the gem of the Rock River Valley, embracing sustainable public policy, service delivery and development, meaning physical development, in ways that protect both our natural and built environment, which means quality development, and enhances economic competitiveness. And finally, and maybe most importantly, creates a high-quality living experience for both current and future generations. And again, when we talk about doing things for the present and also building them in a high-quality way so that they will last for years and serve future generations as well, that's really what sustainability is all about. And of course, our mission statement reinforces that same theme in terms of using sustainable practices. So, following the vision and mission statements that council has established, what in fact has occurred over the last five years? We're going to talk a little bit tonight about some of the major public facilities, infrastructure upgrades, and various economic development opportunities that continue to redefine Beloit, continue to make us a high-quality place, and again, fulfill that vision for being the gem of the Rock River Valley. Let's start with some of the major infrastructure improvements that have occurred in the city over the last five years. This particular interview photo, our introduction photo to this section of the report, of course, is the new Hendrix Memorial Bridge, the old Henry Avenue Bridge across the Rock River. This is a nighttime view with all the ambient lighting in place. But a lot of things have happened in Riverside Park over the last five years. The Mid Lawn Pavilions were completed, the ongoing shoreline stabilization program, which was done in phases, with the largest piece of it, of course, being completed just last year. The north side of the park was completed with the new entry sign that doubles as both a city limit sign as well as an identifier for the park. Back in 2009, we finished about a five-year initiative to acquire and relocate the Ace Hardware business, do a brownfield cleanup on this portion of the park, and then, of course, rebuild the south portion of Riverside Park, expanding the Big Lawn and building the Promenade, which is such a key feature to the park. And also in 2009, Turtle Island was completely redeveloped and turned into the explorer, exploration theme that you see out there now with lots of rocks and water and buried dinosaur fossils and all the other neat discovery features that the children of the community still enjoy. Gateway Boulevard extension was finally completed in 2009, opened up Gateway Boulevard all the way through to Hart Road and Interstate 43, and at the same time provided modern industrial quality street access for the new carry project that's located up on the north end of the Gateway Industrial Area. Riverside Drive was completely redeveloped, literally expanding Riverside Park to the east, putting in decorative medians, street lighting, realigning the parking in the park. And of course, the wayfaring signs were updated and replaced to try to provide direction to visitors to our community. 2012, we mentioned earlier, the Ken Hendrix Memorial Bridge. That project was actually completed that year, was a full year under construction, and in the fall, I believe it was in September, we had a very, very nice ribbon cutting and dedication ceremony, not only opening the bridge, but also honoring Ken Hendrix and the tremendous contributions that he has made to the City of Beloit. And then I hasten to add, Diane has continued since Ken's passing. 2009 also saw the opening of the brand-new, completely refurbished, rebuilt Beloit Library. As you know, they were coming up on the fifth anniversary of that, and the Library Board and the Foundation are planning a, a nice celebration to commemorate five years in the new facility. Doesn't seem possible that the five years could have gone by already. One of the other things we did in '09 is acquired the old Bear property, which had been the metal salvaging operation for a number of years, and that was all cleaned with participation from the prior owner, as well as City of Beloit. South Beloit was also a partner in the project, and we've got a Prairie Reserve, a preserve on that site today. 2010 also saw the opening of the Beloit New Transfer Facility downtown. This was built right during the heart of the, the Great Depression, provided jobs and stimulus for a lot of the local contractors working on this project. As you recall, it's got some neat historical features, including the basic design, which was modeled on one of the old railway stations that was located here in Beloit. Also that year, we did, I guess, the biggest, most notable piece of the Horace White Park Historic Restoration Project. Did a lot of the landscaping, and we also did all the lighting upgrades, got rid of the old Cobra Head fixtures and put historic, our period correct, historic fixtures throughout the park. We've also done work, of course, to the White Monument itself, the White Family Monument. The band shell has been substantially redone. A few years ago, we added, I guess maybe it was last year, we added benches and trash containers that were period correct, and we've done some concrete work in the park, not a lot. A lot of the old walkways need to be redone, and those will be programmed when funding is available. The Snapper Stadium, 12 and 13, a lot of work here, replaced the outfield. The picture on the right is the new concrete concourses. They're not completely restored yet, that'll be finished in the spring. We also rebuilt, remodeled the entire interior of the clubhouse, the public restrooms, done a lot of work on the property, tried to recover, if you will, from a number of years, even decades of deferred maintenance, got the facility back in shape. The Oakland Athletics were very impressed with not only the quality of the playing field, but also the, the quality of the improvements that were made to the player facilities. And actually, tonight, you referred to one of the last pieces of this, the new batting cages, which are required for the facility, and that project is being coordinated by the Snappers, using primarily fundraising from community sources to get those new cages in place, and they hope to do that this year. Downtown has also seen lots of improvements. TIP district improvements include the downtown facade program, and not all, but a lot of the facades downtown are, were done under that particular program. We also did the 4th Street Parking Lot, the Grand Parking Lot, Mill Street Parking Lot, all the downtown public parking lots were redone as part of the TIP improvements. There's also a picture here of the State Street reconstruction. Over the last 10, 12 years, almost all the streets in downtown have been redone. Some of the last ones to be completed were Bushnell Prospect and the College Street Reconstruction before the TIP district expenditure period closed. And obviously, we updated a lot of the street furnishings and other things in the downtown. We also did a lot of upper-floor housing projects, all of which have been successful to our knowledge, are all leased up, and so we brought a lot more people downtown to live, to enjoy the entertainment venues, and certainly the shopping opportunities that are available downtown, as well as the other lifestyle amenities. 2010, the John Rose Canoe and Kayak launch, this is another one of those quality-of-life amenities. When the old parking deck was removed, we had a bear space there along the west shore of the river, and we're trying to come up with a good use for that that would generate activity in downtown. The canoe and kayak launch was a perfect fit for that area, fit into the space nicely. We had a parking lot adjacent, so we would have good access, and the facility gets good use throughout the season. The Gantry Project, one of the largest pieces of street sculpture, was added or has been added along the riverfront in the downtown area in recent years, once again paying heritage to the city's gray metal industrial past with the design and the metal, fabricated metal look on the, on the Gantry. And this certainly is the conversation piece and dominates the primary, what, what the planners call terminating vista, which exists at the intersection of Grand and State Street in the heart of downtown. Public institutions, a lot of other things have been going on in the city. One of the current projects that's well-advanced in the planning stages has already received approval from the College Board of Trustees as to acquire and repurpose the old power plant and turn that into a recreation center slash athletic complex for the college. Work is, is proceeding, the architects have been selected. We don't have a hard timeline yet, because there's a lot of fundraising associated with the project, but this is another really incredible example of how Beloit is able to repurpose and reutilize old buildings like this and turn them into something new, something relevant that enhances the quality of life, enhances the aesthetic appeal of our community. This is one of the reasons Beloit has been so successful at this business of creating a high-quality urban place in the 21st century. Also at the college, the new Science Building, that's got a Platinum LEED certification on it, it's the highest level of environmental certification you can receive through the Green Council, a tremendous accomplishment for the college. 2010, Diane Hendrix had acquired the former library building downtown. In conjunction with the college, she converted that into classroom space and in practice space, and it is now the Hendrix Center for the Arts, and most of the musical and performing arts programs at the college are now domiciled in this facility. It also doubles as a community space, and there are a lot of special events that are hosted there each year. So again, a wonderful repurposing and reuse of an old heritage building of architectural significance and a use that further brought the Beloit College into Beloit's downtown. The school projects go on and on. We have ribbon cuttings now. We have ribbon cuttings now, we've been through four or five of those, more to go. The new Nattatorium, one of the largest in the state of Wisconsin. All the elementary and most of the new intermediate schools under the student assignment program that the district has adopted have either been completed and been completely remodeled with building additions, state-of-the-art facilities, or they're under construction. The last project, of course, is the new intermediate school out on Milwaukee Road. Construction will begin on that project in the spring. Commerce and Industry, there's been a lot of things going on in the private sector concurrent with all of the other improvements that have been happening in the city. The Hendricks Properties, we'll start with that, we've clustered those because there's so much. The Phoenix Project Downtown literally has altered the streetscape in an incredibly dramatic way. I had an opportunity to go through the facility on Friday. They've made a tremendous amount of progress throughout the winter. Part of that, the upper fourth floor of the residential area may be ready for occupancy in a matter of a few weeks, and as the rebalance of the building is completed, it'll be brought online. The Ironworks Campus on the west side of the river, dramatic improvements, new businesses moving in, major renovation, 30 million plus being spent on the old Beloit Corporation campus, pardon me, to repurpose this space and bring companies and bring jobs back into the city center, and it's been incredibly successful. Many of the companies recruited there are technology-oriented firms, and they've been growing and expanding their employment base since they first located here. And of course, the former Beloit Inn, the Ironworks Hotel has been completely remodeled. They're still working on some of the sleeping rooms, but it has a whole new, unique look that kind of ties it to the Ironworks Campus on the west side of the river. Really, a unique treatment of that property. I've never seen a hotel with quite that aesthetic look and feel, so very, very creative, very original, very high-quality again. Beloit Memorial Hospital has also done some major expansion projects. 2010, they cut the ribbon for the brand-new emergency department, all-new vastly expanded emergency room. And of course, just a few weeks ago, in early '14, we had the dedication of the new Cancer Center, which is a joint project of the Beloit Health Systems and the University Hospital. So, very, very exciting, have something of this quality here in the city and is now a part of the streetscape out on East Milwaukee Avenue. Gateway Development has continued during these years despite the Great Recession and the general slowdown in industrial-type development. Kettle Foods did a major expansion, doubled their production capacity, more than doubled their warehouse and distribution capacity. Cary Ingredients continues to grow, they expanded, moved a lot of their office operations so they could free up more space for research and development units of the corporation in the main building. They now have over 600 employees on that site, coming and going each day, plus hundreds of visitors that come there for any number of purposes associated with the research and development capacity of that facility. Certainly, Beloit is open for business. Couple of years ago, we brought out, bought out our private sector partner in the Gateway Business Park, MLG Real Estate, and we took over control of all of that acreage, purchased some additional land from them. We also purchased the site that is set aside, being reserved for Narstar Radioisotope. We hope that company will get the first phase of their physical development started in the foreseeable future. And just recently, we bought out some more land north of the Gateway Business Park, but adjacent to Gateway Boulevard in the TIP district. So, we've been doing a lot of marketing. We had a major meeting with representatives from realtors and developers all over the upper Midwest this fall. We've been running ads, and we've been very aggressively marketing the city and marketing these industrial sites. Downtown, we talked a little bit about the infrastructure earlier. This section's going to focus on some of the business development because the great architecture, the nice streets, rather, and the artwork and the trees and decorative lighting are great, but they don't work unless they can bring and promote and support the business development. This first slide shows one of our major facade renovation achievements, the Bagels &amp; Moore Building, what it looked like before on the left and the new building on the right that was done following the facade renovation. Rival Sports Bar, you all remember what that building looked like near the end of its prior lifespan. That building was bought, virtually gutted and completely redone inside and out. The Dominico's Restaurant, they added and have expanded that entire outdoor seating area. The exterior of the building has been completely remodeled. Six Fifteen Club did that 1,500-square-foot addition back in 2012, added immensely, not only to their business capacity, and they certainly needed the space. The business has been very successful, but it also improved the aesthetic of that entire block during that kind of an upgrade. Northwoods Premium, one of three businesses in the downtown area that are direct offshoots of the farmer's market. So, when you talk about special events and the ability of those events to impact a downtown business district like this, we are a great case study in how one of our premier events, the farmer's market, actually has spun off now three permanent businesses that are located year-round in stores in downtown Beloit. Facade renovations, we've done a lot of them. This was another one. You saw Bagels &amp; Moore earlier, this is the cash station on State Street, and this was completely redone, I believe it was early last year, and finished. And again, a pretty dramatic improvement in that storefront. There's some other projects planned for 2014 as well, if the weather, in fact, ever breaks for us. First National Bank has also been a major, major investor in Beloit, citywide and certainly in downtown. 12 and 13, they completely remodeled the bank exterior of the original building. The interior, of course, has been maintained in really pristine condition. They also did a building expansion across the street where they have a lot of their back-office operations. They put an extension or expansion on there, tied two buildings together, did it in a very, very high-quality manner. You don't, you wouldn't even know that they weren't connected or haven't been connected in the past. And of course, they continue to fulfill their commitment to the city center, not only in terms of building expansions and improvements, but also in the bank plaza across the street, which serves as one of our event centers and functions really as a public park, even though it's privately owned and maintained by the bank. Fat Wallet, the company that moved into the city-owned building on West Grand, has continued to expand, extended their lease again in 2013. They've been very pleased with their downtown city center site, and they've continued to grow, added a lot of employees to that operation since they first moved to Beloit, I believe it was about three years ago now. They came from Illinois and moved up to the city center. Ongoing activities, once again, buildings, infrastructure, streetscape, it's all important, it's all necessary to create a quality urban place. But again, it doesn't mean anything unless you can use that space. You have to animate it, bring people into it, and that's done very, very well in the city of Beloit. Everything from the International Film Festival to the farmer's market, bring huge crowds into city center of Beloit, literally year-round. Music at Harry's, the plein air art event, July 4th celebrations, just a few of the highlights of the many things that go on in the city of Beloit every year. Much of this is, of course, centered in the heart of downtown or in the new Riverside Park, and this really makes all of these venues come alive. This is one of the reasons our city center, particularly our downtown renovation, has been so successful. And of course, the more successful events you have, the more people you bring into the downtown, the more business capacity is there, and the easier it is to recruit and retain retailers. And then, of course, the better retailers you have, the more people want to come downtown, and it's kind of a mutually reinforcing cycle that occurs. And once you reach a critical mass, the way our downtown has, where you've gotten the physical improvements, you've gotten the new businesses opening, and you've got the special events all going concurrently, then it's a little bit easier to keep that going, although it's always a work in progress. And I think I'm going to finish up tonight with that little comment. As much as has been done, and as beautiful as the city is, you cannot rest on your laurels. And I'm not trying to paraphrase the paper today, they made a similar comment in their editorial in today's BDN, but it is very, very true. You can't rest on your laurels. You're either moving forward or you're sliding back. You never stay the same. So, Beloit, as much as has been done, remains a work in progress, and as you know, we're still planning for more projects in the future, more upgrades and improvements, and as are all of our other partners throughout the city, from our institutional partners to our private organizations that have been helping out, to other quasi-governmental and not-for-profit groups that are all a part of what's made Beloit special and what's facilitated this urban Renaissance that's created this quality place. So with that, councilors, thank you very much for your kind attention this evening. If there are any questions or anything else you would like me to highlight, I'd be more than happy to do that.
Do we have any questions or comments? Hearing none, well, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
All right. Item 12 is reports from boards and city officers, 12A.
A resolution authorizing Blackhawk State Bank an extension for outstanding special assessments at 2231 Trevino Court, Beloit, Wisconsin.
Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. The resolution before the council tonight would have the effect of granting a three-year deferral for payment of the special assessments previously levied on what is now a single parcel of land but contains four buildable lots. So, there's four assessments, four individual assessments on this single parcel. The matter was previously levied by council. The special assessment for the year of 2013 actually went on to the tax rolls in November of last year. Your action tonight, if you approve this, will not affect that amount. That amount will remain on the rolls, but approval of the resolution would defer the levy or the assessments from being added to the rolls for 2014, 15, and 16. This is similar to action the council has taken in the past for some other subdivisions, including Acorn Development and Walnut Grove. This particular area is known as Western Hills subdivision, if that helps orient consters to the location. I guess, at this point, I really don't have much more that's not in the staff report or the resolution. I'd be happy to ask questions. I would note that Blackhawk State Bank's counsel, Tim Lindell, is present here tonight if there are questions that I can't adequately respond to.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve item 12A?
So moved, Mr. President.
Moved by Van de Bogart, seconded by Levy. Do we have any questions or comments? Councilor Van de Bogart.
I'm assuming that the deferral does not mean that the interest continues, is deferred, it's deferred, not eliminated. Is that...
That is correct. The ordinance, which we visited a few years back, I don't remember exactly, sets out the specific ordinance. It's tied to the state trust fund rate, I think it is.
That's my memory, yeah.
And I can't recite the amount off the top of my head, but interest would continue to accrue.
Yeah. Councilor Lubke.
Attorney Casper, this is consistent with previous practice?
It is, and it reflects the desire, I believe, to avoid these lots ending up on the tax rolls and then the city having to deal with the question of what to do with those when they come up in the county foreclosure sale.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes six zero. Item 12B.
A resolution authorizing a Trans-75 exception request for pavement replacement on Bayless Avenue.
Mr. Boyson.
The Engineering Division has recommended that the city council approve a resolution to authorize a Trans-75 exception request for the pavement replacement on Bayless Avenue. Trans-75 is a relatively new state law that relates to sidewalk and bicycle complete street concepts for certain streets utilizing certain types of funding. The statutes provide for reasonable evaluations of the practicality and the actual need for such things. In the case of the Bayless project, this is a multi-staged project that's been underway for the past two years, programmed to continue for the next two years also, in cooperation with the town of Beloit. And in this case, there's sidewalk on both sides of the street. It's a very low-volume street, less than 1,500 vehicles per day. And in accordance with the criteria, the regulations, and the absence of need for a bike lane has been established by the city engineer, and particularly noting that the addition of a bike lane would also result in significant changes being required of other infrastructure that would be beyond the cost projections for the project. So based on that, the city staff recommends the city council's adoption of the resolution needed to utilize the proposed funds in accordance with the applicable procedures to proceed as previously programmed.
Motion for approval. Moved by Lubke, seconded by Kincaid. Thank you for your promptness on that. And do we have any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes six zero. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Levy. Seconded by Van de Bogart. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.